I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Salah Houdin, Councilmember Stewart, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Nueva Camina, and online we have Councilmember Anderson. And I believe Councilmember Fields is not here tonight, but should he join, I will announce him. And myself, Council President Kritzer. There are three items on the agenda tonight. The City of Redmond 2025 State Legislative Agenda, Stormwater Permit Presentation, NPDES 101, and Council Talk Time. The first item on the agenda is the City of Redmond 2025 State Legislative Agenda, and Amy Tsai, our Chief Policy Advisor, will introduce this item. Go ahead, Ms. Tsai.
Good evening, Amy Tsai, Chief Policy Advisor. And with me is Brianna Murray, our state lobbyist, and so appreciative of her making the travel down to be with us today. So today is our second hearing on the draft State Legislative Agenda. And today, you had asked last time for more details about the priority asks that are on the front page. So we're going to begin by walking through a bit more specifics about each of those projects, and then we're going to look at the remainder of the agenda, and I will walk you through the edits that have been made in response to all of your excellent feedback from last time. I'll give a brief recap of the timeline and open it up for any discussion and feedback. So this is your process for making any changes or comments, and so I'll be looking to the Council President to guide us through that process when we get there. All right. So as you recall, from the first page ask, these are the priority-specific requests that we make to our state legislators, and we have four currently on the list. And as I mentioned last time, two of these are dependent on the outcome of the November elections and whether we still have Climate Commitment Act funding for the state session. So what this draft does this time is it has Draft A marked, it's just noted as A, for the item that is in the event that there is a Climate Commitment Act continuing. And then there is a Draft B, which would be the language we would be using in the event that the Climate Commitment Act is repealed in November. So that on the front page is the only change. Everything else will actually remain the same. All right. So for these slides, I kept the same slides you had seen last time and then elaborate on them. So the first slide should look familiar to you, and then we're going to do a deeper dive into the specifics. For the AC Water Main Replacement Project, this is a $1 million ask on the Avondale Road Northeast area. And so the asbestos cement water main pipes are pipes that are spread throughout the city. There's 53 miles of it, and these are things that were installed nationwide. And nationwide, they are all old, and they're all brittle. And brittle means they break more. And so it is a priority of this department and the city to start replacing those as soon as practically possible. And so we have some information here that we're sharing with the legislators about, you know, the importance of replacing the pipes for water accesses is fairly obvious, but you can have drinking water, you want your water to be clean. There's also fire protection elements of having access to water. And a lot of these areas have salmon-bearing streams, and so if you have a pipe that breaks, as this graphic illustration shows you, you can have water flooding into these streams, creating turbidity and causing problems for the salmon that are trying to grow up in those areas. So this is a map of the area. The dots reflect where some of those breaks have occurred, and the little red box is the proposed area of replacement for this particular ask. But AC pipe replacement in general is the highest priority project in our water system plan because it is pervasive, and there are so many of them in need of replacement. Some key facts about this project. It's in the 45th Legislative District because, as you can see, there's need everywhere. And so trying to identify, you know, and spread the support around, it's in the 45th. And also, we're looking for efficiencies. So these pipe locations are also picked based on where there may already be planned pavement work going on. And so the idea is to try to make good use of our city dollars and have an efficient replacement process. The total cost for this particular replacement is going to be in the neighborhood of $3 million for the water replacement component, and then there will be some additional costs from just the naturally co-occurring related pavement work that's going on in the area. So when we head into session, I wanted to note that we'll be meeting with our state legislators again. So for those of you who are able to make the journey, we're going to be going over a lot of this material with them. So you don't really have to absorb it now. Today is more for your general awareness, and we'll definitely be recapping it and giving you handouts and such. So you don't have to memorize it now, but we'll definitely be using this material to help prepare you for those of you who are able to make it. And I will just also add, thank you so much to those of you who were able to come last year because that direct contact is so valuable. And Brianna, thank you for hosting.
My pleasure.
All right. So for the second item, this is the City Services Center, which would be in the Transit Ord and Development over in Overlake. And the request is, as a reminder, $618,000 for city space to co-locate city services. So some of those services, it's still in development, so it might be things like a customer service desk, translation, bill pay, and other such services. Also, being co-located with other uses. And so we're really hoping that there's going to be a small business hub that will be adjacent and really provide a lot of interconnected services for this area. Also, one feature that we're going to be touting, it's the multicultural aspect of this neighborhood and of the opportunities for services in this area. Obviously, we have a very diverse city, and this neighborhood in particular, a lot of multicultural aspects to it. And access, of course, being close to the incoming light rail station, it is great for getting people to another location for city services. So, oh, sorry, one more thing, apologies. In the agenda, there was also mentioned that we were supporting that small business hub concept. I have moved that to the statement of supporting page because there was already a similar reference there. And so the request for support for other people's shared interests really belongs better in that section, so it has been moved there. And your draft reflects that.
And I would just note that this project is in the 48th Legislative District, so you have one in the 45th and one in the 48th.
All right. So next, this is Draft A. So if there is a Climate Commitment Act, then we already have an $8 million appropriation that we would be asking to re-scope this project. We are calling it the Multimodal Overlake Village Access Project, or MOVA. And so this re-scoping, it would be getting $750,000 in the biennium is what is currently on the books if the Climate Commitment Act holds. And then we would be looking to repurpose that money to align with other projects in the area, but still serve generally multimodal access in this neighborhood and region. So the next slide here shows you a map of the planned projects that it would be repurposed to. The blue dotted lines are where there are currently gaps in the system that can be improved. And so the project request would be to improve the shared-use path on 148th, which is north of where the original project was. So hopefully still serving some of that same clientele. And also making better bike connections on Northeast 36th. So you can see that when you fill in those blue dotted lines, it creates a more integrated multimodal path and network for people traveling to take advantage of both the nearby OVS Bridge and also the Redmond Technology Station Bridge.
The next item is the Electric Fire Engine. This is the request we would advance if the Climate Commitment Act is repealed. We would request that the legislature dip into other funds in order to honor the commitment that they made last legislative session to allocate $200,000 for the first electric fire engine purchase in the state. And I think you all are relatively familiar with this request from our work last session, but to remind you, there are several benefits to the city getting an electric fire engine. The first is the health of first responders and neighborhood residents with the reduced noise and air pollution. The second is the environmental benefits of replacing a diesel engine with an electric option. And then the third is Redmond being viewed as a leader in the state and an early adopter on fleet conversion. The next item on the agenda is support for state grant application funding sources. So these are programs where the city applies for the grant, but then the legislature actually approves the list of grants that are appropriated funds. So the city's applied for a WashDOT Mobility Grant and an RCO Grant. The WashDOT Mobility Grant is Downtown Redmond On-Demand Micro Transit Service. So it's an on-demand service in the shaded area to provide the first and last mile of transportation to encourage access to jobs, hotels, and other destinations. It eases congestion and reduces greenhouse gas emissions. The second grant is through the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. It's a WWRP grant for $500,000, and it's ranked 19 of 64. And it is for Southeast Redmond Park, which is a 3.2-acre undeveloped park located between 188th and 191st. It would serve as an important barrier between an industrial area and a residential area. Back to the regional mobility grant component, we won't know how that project is ranked until November. Because of that, the language on the legislative agenda has been slightly updated. Instead of asking that the overall programs receive a certain amount of money, we have inserted the grant application amount. And that way, we're not negotiating with ourselves. Where we're at in the stage of the process and where we will be between November and December is that the agency is going to submit a proposal to the governor's office, and the governor's office will release a proposed budget with a funding amount within it. That funding amount could end up serving as the high or low point. So by putting in an overall dollar amount to be allocated to these programs, we could end up sort of undercutting negotiations that have yet to occur. So they've been reframed. Carry on to that one.
Oh, thank you. All right. So next, we have the second page, which is the regional priorities, which are the shared interests that other cities have, where we're all trying to work towards common goals and objectives. So on the RAP Act, we are not sure what the act will be called this year, but so we have Washington Recycling and Packaging Extended Producer Responsibility to identify what it is descriptively. And then the language has been strengthened in response to your feedback to just give a stronger cause of why it's so important, that 70% of what goes into our landfill is reusable, recyclable, compostable, and that recycling and composting is one of the top priorities identified by our residents as well. And just in conjunction with this, trying to reach our targets, we really need that statewide support and that push to have the producers be responsible for their own products. Next, on affordable housing. In response to feedback on that, there's just a wording clarification that's occurring. So this is a regional ask to provide more flexibility with regards to affordable housing tools. So that is with real estate excise tax revenue to support regional projects and also overcoming barriers that local developers may have in building affordable housing and in particular faith-based organizations. And so in response to your feedback, it is just a wording clarification here. The barriers we're talking about is, we're talking about barriers to development as opposed to barriers to access. And then new, you had a lot of questions about transportation. There's a lot going on, a big revenue shortfall at the state level. And so in recognition of that, we've added a new paragraph that is about transportation funding that just recognizes this is going to be a big conversation that heavily impacts everyone this session. And so the paragraph notes that we're facing a massive asset maintenance burden as our infrastructure ages. It identifies that estimated preservation and maintenance gap of roughly $100 million. And then as partners regionally, we all need to come together, and this language is similar to the language that's being adopted by the Association of Washington Cities to explore transportation revenue options for local needs. All right. So moving on to the support issues, if there are no questions on that. For the housing area, I have a verbal amendment I would like to offer, which is that Redmond supports legislation consistent with its Housing Action Plan, but adding that it's supporting legislation and state funding. And so the idea is like things like the Housing Trust Fund, and so Council President Kritzer had made that comment during the last session, and so that is a proposed edit here. And you all can discuss that when we get to the feedback session, but I want to flag that that is not in your materials. Also, going down to community vitality, as I had mentioned, there was mention about support for this multicultural small business hub, and so that language is just made more broad and just generally saying, please support it without being specific about the mechanisms that support might take. And the last and final change on the agenda from last time is that under the Public Safety section, because there was interest in youth drug education awareness in particular, we added the word youth because youth drug education has a different connotation than general drug awareness. And so just to highlight that that is the particular interest in this situation. So with that, those are the main changes. We have some timelines coming up. We're at the second review. We would be looking to hopefully send it to consent on November 19th, and your session will begin on January 13th. So with that, Council President, I would just open it up for comments, questions?
Thank you so much to you both for your work on this. Questions from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Not a question per se, but a comment on the MOVA, Multimodal Overlake Village Access. I was really bummed when we removed that bridge project, but seeing this, and I know staff had alluded to not wanting to steal your thunder, and this is exciting. I think this is a really elegant solution for the same kind of outcomes, and I'm really getting kind of excited about this because as a cyclist who's not generally worried about cars, 148th does worry me, and I only rode it during the pandemic when nobody was out. So this is fantastic. This really bridges the whole grass lawn Kirkland area to get to the light rail stations, and I think this is a great solution, so thank you for that. As far as the added language on the support issues, can you clarify on the Housing Action Plan and funding, that those wouldn't necessarily be tied together? It's not a yes and, but it's a, yeah, can you just clarify that?
Yes, correct. Did you? Okay. So the language is, is both that Redmond supports legislation consistent with its Housing Action Plan and also it supports state funding consistent with its housing?
Yeah. I think it's the also that I was missing, and so that it's not tied together.
Okay.
Yeah. And then on the public safety one, we're not saying that we wouldn't do adult education, but we're saying we would target more directly at youth. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just a clarification on that. Could you just read us the proposed language on the Housing Action Plan one so that the council could hear it? I know you had sent it to me.
Sure. Would you like me to read the whole paragraph so you have it in context or just the one sentence?
Maybe the first two sentences, three sentences.
All right. So our growth target anticipates 20,000 new homes between 2019 and 2044. We need 75% of those homes at 0 to 50% of AMI, but we need assistance with funding mechanisms to achieve that goal. I'm paraphrasing. Redmond supports legislation and also state funding consistent with its Housing Action Plan to preserve, improve, and expand housing stock, increase housing choices for people at all income levels and abilities, and eliminate discriminatory land use in housing practices.
Thank you.
What inserts and also state funding is the ad.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Thank you. No questions from me, just appreciative of that addition in that public safety support item and also detailing out that transportation funding item in the regional priorities. I think it's great that we have those two options for the drafts. So thank you again for, you know, going back through and dividing those up so that it's clear to us on how we're going to move forward based on different votes. And so I'm just very appreciative of your work.
I want to, one comment on the MOVA project, building on what Councilmember Forsyth said. I'll just note that as we prepare for the legislative session, we provide you with materials. One of the key talking points that I'll encourage you all to utilize is that we recognize the dire situation that the state is in regarding transportation funding and got very creative on how to still accomplish the overarching goal of the other project in order to make light of accommodate the state budgeting situation. So I just wanted to share that that's a key talking point, and I think it'll resonate.
Oh, and if I could also add, Council President, one more positive note to share. As a further sign of our commitment in this area, we did receive notice that we have been successful in one of the grants for the connecting dots in that area. And so the road safety grant has been awarded.
Oh, wonderful. Great. Other questions? I thought I saw, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. Since we're discussing the Overlake project, I'll just quickly thank the staff who met with me yesterday to have a few more of my detailed questions answered. I think that the dynamics of the state legislature are more to do with the change than anything else we're seeing in this project. I'll just flag for the two of you, I don't need a response on this quickly, but literally just between meetings this afternoon, I was able to catch the planning staff. I don't think that the proposed project is actually in the Overlake Village Zone. I think it's actually in OBAT. So the project, we may just need the language to just be Overlake. That would be fine, too, if that's what we're going for. So I think that they will circle back again. Sorry, that was literally just in the last little while that caught my attention. So again, thanks to the staff for their work on this. I'm very supportive of the adding the and housing funding. And just so my colleagues know, I know I've said this a few times in email, but in the room at AWC for the legislative priorities, this is something that our colleagues statewide were very clear on. The legislature has put out a lot of directives, and now we need their help to continue to build the housing that we need statewide. So was happy to see that prioritized in their agenda as well. Amy, I'm a bit unclear. You mentioned that support for the Bellwether Hub was moved from the, a piece of that was moved from somewhere on the front page to somewhere else. Just as you were speaking, I wasn't following exactly where that was.
Sure. So the very last sentence of the front page used to be, Redmond also supports funding that allows the small business hub to be fully realized, which is that adjacent service, not the city.
Sorry, could you say that one more time, a little bit slower?
Oh, sorry about that. Sure. So Redmond supports funding that allows the small business hub to be fully realized, which is a separate ask than the actual city center that we're proposing. So that language is moved to be, it's really actually expressed already in the community vitality section. So if you go to the third page, where it was talking about things like, originally it talked about tax increment financing, but we're keeping the language broader to just say we are supporting multicultural small business and local economic development programs.
Okay, great. And especially for Brianna, is that functionally good enough when that particular project is on the table in conversations this coming winter?
Yeah, I think what this looks like as far as action items that would be taken in a lobbying context would be if the sponsors of the hub are looking for support, we would provide a letter of support signed by the mayor. And then if we were asked to participate in any meetings or asked directly, we would say we were supportive.
Great. Okay, thank you. My last comment is just, I really appreciate moving support for Redmond renters to the regional priorities page. I think that's absolutely the right place for it to be elevated. Redmond has taken leadership roles, and now it's really important for the state to create a little bit of normalcy around some of the key issues that renters are facing. So very happy to see that elevated in our agenda. Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you. Not seeing other questions at the moment. I will just follow up on the renter piece, and I would say I overall am supportive of the language that we have here. I just want to make sure that we do go into session on the same page, that this is really giving the direction, that our council would like to see us advocate and support bills that will advance tenant protections and support for renters. So just want to make sure that this language is providing the direction so that we all can be on the same page going into session on that, and wanted to confirm that with you, that you feel that's what this language is doing.
Yeah.
Cool, great. And in line with the Housing Action Plan and some of the things that we have in there as well. So thank you. And then one question that I had about the first two, first-page requests, are both of these through the local community projects funds, or what are the funding pots that we're requesting those out, or are they like each legislative district's special request?
They're the local and community project fund.
Okay, great. And I appreciate how you updated on the bottom, the different state grant application funding sources. I think when we get into session, it would be great for us to align with others. I know, I think RCO did submit to the governor's office a request for $150 million for the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, for example. So, you know, that's when we'll have to watch that, as you said, and see what's the different, you know, levels of support for that. But it would be great to align with other cities and other jurisdictions that are advocating on that.
Yeah, absolutely. The testimony on those type of projects and how it's conveyed is typically, you know, the program is funded at X million dollars in the governor's proposed budget. We ask that you increase it, reduce it, or retain it based on the dynamics. This program is very important for projects all across the state, including one that's ranked number da-da-da, and here's all the benefits of the project. That's sort of how that ends up being actualized.
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, I think it is important for us to advocate for our project, highlight it, and to make sure there's enough funding so they can get to our level, which we're pretty well-ranked this time. But also to support, you know, the integrity of the process as well.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Council President. And I think the language, because it says support funding for state grant programs, and we specifically did not call it a specific number to avoid that problem, to be more collaborative and have that flexibility to be broadly supportive also.
Great, yeah. And to elaborate on that point, I think just to say, we wouldn't want to encourage the state legislature to say cherry pick a lower-ranked project just because someone advocated for it, but instead use the rankings in that process for funding. So that's just my personal opinion on that. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Council President, thank you for bringing up the point around the renters, because one of my concerns that I have, and I don't know exactly how we make this point known or spotlight it somehow when we go to, into the year. Redmond has continued to be a leader when it comes to finding solutions for affordable housing. That's evident in our 2050 plan and some of the hard pushes that we're putting there, you know, 12% inclusionary housing, taking that down to the zero to 60. And here, you know, we're talking about adding 20,000 new homes within a 25-year span, which is phenomenal. However, as we're sitting here now at round about 80,000 residents in Redmond now, we know that half of those are renters. So half of the residents in Redmond are subject to displacement of some kind without having tenant protections that are both fair for both the property owner as well as the tenant. Now, that number is going to get skewed a bit. When we're adding 20,000, the majority of that is going to be renters, and these are going to be rental properties that we're building to have these new homes because we're not going to be adding any for their single family. So I don't know, and this is where, you know, just bringing it up, the importance and what other cities in the region are facing this issue. And I feel, and I don't know this by me, I feel like perhaps we're one of the only ones in this situation where we are growing at this level. We're already at 50% renters, and what are we doing to make sure that our renters have protections?
What, sorry, is there, in terms of the?
I suppose that the question is, is there an appropriate place when we start having the conversations at the state level to say, hey, and this is important, look at what's happening in Redmond so that other cities, as they're growing and their ratio starts to get imbalanced, that we've got some things to put in place? Because I have a significant concern, because we're going to be over 50% if we're not technically already. And when we're adding 20,000 rental properties, thereabouts, things get skewed real quick.
Yeah, I think that messaging is what you would convey in meetings with legislators, in testimony. in testimony, and would be part of making the compelling case behind your statement here in support of tenant protections and rent regulation.
And to your point, Councilmember, highlighting that Redmond is one of the fastest-growing cities in the country.
Thank you. Council President Forsyth?
Just to that point, I think we're kind of circling around one of the main things that we've talked about many times on this housing topic. I have gone to the state legislature and testified many -- every session in the past about affordable housing and tenant protections. In the past, I've been told I have to do that in my personal capacity. So I think the thing we're trying to get a hold of here is this document now, as it is written, allows us as, in our council member role, to go forward and say, I am here as a council member. Is that your understanding as well?
Well, I take my direction to Amy, so I'm going to let her have the final say, but that is my understanding at the moment.
I think generally, yes. And what we're trying to do with the second-page elevation is to make sure when we do the weekly reports, that you're getting updates, that these are the topics that are priorities for you as well as the region. So there's going to be more of a magnifying glass spotlight on these particular issues, so you will be seeing them as they come up. And then when they come up, this is also an indication of some amount of staff time, and so we will be able to -- because there's a lot of things on this list. And so for these in particular, then we can be giving you a comparison of how do the bills that are working their way through, how are they similar and how are they different from Redmond's Housing Action Plan, from Redmond's Tenant Protection Ordinance? So you will have that real time, well, in a weekly report basis, for that process. So I would say it's a yes, but you don't -- we don't yet know what the bills are.
Right.
We just have a good idea.
Great. Thank you for that. I look forward to testifying this session.
Thank you. I had one other item. Oh, there's a hand online. Hold on a second here. That's Councilmember Anderson. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to say thank you to Amy and her team for taking comments from me online. I appreciated that opportunity. And I had commented on a couple of wording issues, and that was it. Otherwise, I'm very supportive of the proposal. And I did have a question, given that we spoke about the tenant protections, I think, last week. That was a proposal from, I think, councilmembers Critzer and Forsyth. I was curious if that's -- I think we decided to, in addition to this state legislation, if we will be also doing our own work at the city? And I'm just curious if that's going to be coming back up, or if -- because I have a comment about it for later at talktime, but not for the state legislative priorities.
Is the question if we will be doing that? Sorry, can you clarify?
Yes, I just wanted to know when the better time would be for me to make a comment about our issues, or if we are no longer pursuing that in favor of the state policies.
I think what we decided last week was that the council members who are interested in working on it would start discussing with staff and working on what it would look like for the city to update our existing tenant protections simultaneously, as the advocacy would be going at the state level, so that we'd be ready right near the end of the legislative session to be able to take action at the city level. And should there be action at the state level that kind of supersedes what we're trying to do, or it just does some of the things that we would need, that we'd be looking at, then we could kind of take those off the list and just look at some of the other things. But we'd still be making progress at the city level on some of the things that are in our jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. It's the two levels is more complicated than I understood, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands here. I will just say one other small comment, which, just a very small one, on the asylum seekers item, was there any change made to that one, or did that one stay the same?
No changes.
Okay. I would say the only thing that I might propose on that one in terms of a language change, which I had brought up earlier, is that I just want to make sure that it's clear that our city is very supportive of finding the support for asylum seekers and people who are migrating into our city. I would love to change the word "grapple" to something a little bit more supportive, like as Washington State cities continue to work to welcome unprecedented numbers or something like that, so that it's just clear that we're not just grappling with a challenge, which obviously it is a challenge for those who are coming here, but that we are -- we want to welcome them, and we want to have the resources to support them. I'd love to see that change, if my colleagues were supportive of that. Seeing thumbs on that. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you for flagging that. And just for my colleagues, again, this is something that the SCA has struggled to get its messaging around, but it is worth, I think, being in alignment with whatever SCA, or at least taking a look at to see if we can be in alignment with SCA on this topic, because it's been such a big discussion regionally here with our SCA fellow members. So I appreciate your flag on that, Council President.
Great. Thank you so much. Not seeing any other hands raised. Sounds like we have gotten through most of the issues. Council members, are we good putting this on to consent with changes depending on the election of the two versions? Seeing thumbs, all right. So I think we're good on that. Do you want to speak about follow-up steps, Ms. Forsyth?
Actually, if you don't mind, Council President, I'd like to just briefly recap where we are on changes. And so Councilmember Stewart had mentioned "Overlake Village" as potentially not locationally accurate. And so if you are flexible, then I will double-check with staff, and it'll either be called "Overlake Village Access" or "Overlake Access," whichever is most appropriate. So that would just be a title change. And then we have on the second page, changing "grapple" with apologies for missing that last time, change that to "work to welcome." And then on the housing front, add "and also state funding," as we had discussed that prior language.
Great. That covers, I think, the changes we discussed. All right, seen some nodding heads, so we're good there. So sounds like next steps you'll be bringing back to us on November 19th for consent. I guess if you could send around post-election the final version for us all to know what we'll be voting on on the 19th, that would be great to have the heads up.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. With that, do you have any other comments? Otherwise, we can wrap up this item.
Just thank you so much for your engagement, both during session, after session, in preparation for the next session. It's a never-ending process, and you are all -- you always bring so much energy and expertise to the table. We're just really lucky to have your representation in Olympia.
Well, I'll say thank you to the two of you. You've done some amazing work for us, and I know this is going to be a big legislative session, a lot of complex issues to work on, so thank you in advance. And also, I understand for Mayor Bernie that hopefully we're going to have our legislative dinner next to the AWC days and potentially cancel the council meeting that week. So I just thought I would let everyone know in advance that's what the thinking is. I don't know if it's been confirmed yet, but I thought I would just flag that for council members for their scheduled planning.
I have the restaurant reserved.
Oh, great. Okay.
And we'll also have our pre-session warm-up event the first week of January, second week of January.
Great. Well, hopefully, we can work with our legislative coordinator to get those dates from you and get them on council member calendars as soon as possible, so we all can participate.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. And with that, we'll end this agenda item and move on to the next. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Stormwater Permit Presentation, NPDES 101. And we have Director Erin Burt, Public Works Director, who will introduce this item.
Good evening, council members. Erin Burt, Public Works Director. We're going to do a bit of an education for you this evening. I'm joined by Ernest Fix, or also known as Ernie, who is our Maintenance and Operations Manager that oversees stormwater, all our water quality. And then Ann Dettelbach, who is our NPDES Program Administrator. The thing that I want to tee up on this is that the critical work that these two do and the teams within the Public Works Department is this behind-the-scenes protection of our environment and water quality here within Redmond. It's the stuff that goes unnoticed, but it contributes to the overall health and quality of our water and the environment in general. And I will actually say, Ann is a phenomenal program administrator, and I would match our program against any program in the state or nationwide in terms of our ability to be responsive and be in compliance with the requirements of NPDES, which is a federal permit that is then delegated down to the state level for implementation at the local level. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the experts, and I think first up will be Ernie.
Thank you, Director Burt. We are getting the slideshow rolling here, and there we have it. All right. Well, thank you for having us tonight. We're going to give you the quick 101 on NPDES. That's our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. It is a mouthful, that's why we use the acronym. Erin already introduced Ann. So with that, I will get into what our agenda is for the evening. So to start out, we're going to go over a few basic definitions that apply to the NPDES permit. Ann's going to cover that. Then we're going to look at a few of the new permit requirements for the next five-year session of the permit that has just kicked off here in 2024. We're going to lead into a little bit of a deeper dive on operations that I'll walk you through, and then we'll shift over to some of the related stormwater programs that may not be direct permit requirements, but definitely work towards the same goals. And then finally, to wrap it up, we're going to look ahead at what's coming and be available to cover any questions that you may have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ann.
Thanks, Ernie. So let's start with a couple of definitions. Stormwater. Stormwater is simply rain or melting snow that hits the ground. In an average year, Redmond gets about 11 billion gallons of water falling on our fair city. In a natural system like the one you see in this slide, that stormwater is either intercepted by the trees, or it soaks into the ground, or it flows across the surface and slowly makes its way to a receiving water. In a built environment like the city of Redmond, that stormwater hits hard surfaces. Think about roofs, parking lots, driveways, pavement. And when it hits those surfaces, it picks up pollutants, it picks up energy, and then it enters our city's storm system and is funneled directly into those receiving waters, where it deposits its pollutants, or with that energy scours out the creeks, scours out sensitive habitats. Bless you. NPDES, both the director and Ernie mentioned the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. This is a pollution control permit that's issued under the Federal Clean Water Act, and we'll cover that, I think, in the next slide. So this slide basically distills or shows us how the NPDES permit is handed down to the city of Redmond. At the top, starting at the top, we have US EPA implementing the Federal Clean Water Act. The Clean Water Act's goal is to, quote, "restore and maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of our nation's waters." One of the key tools under the Federal Clean Water Act to accomplish this goal is the NPDES permit. This is a pollution control permit that is handed to potential polluters like industrial sites, wastewater treatment plants like Brightwater or West Point. It is given to construction sites and any other entities that are likely to cause water pollution. These permits basically set limits on the amount of pollution permittees can release to area waterways. It is a permit to pollute. Moving down the chain, in Washington State, the Department of Ecology develops and administers the NPDES permit program under authority delegated by US EPA. One of the permits that Ecology administers is the NPDES Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit Program for Western Washington. That is the permit that we have as a city. This permit deals with discharges from public storm systems to surface waters like creeks, lakes, wetlands, and groundwater. It is assigned to roughly 85 communities around Western Washington and some other municipal entities that operate storm systems. Our NPDES permit directs the city to develop a stormwater management program. Some people call it a SWIMP or a SWOMP. We were first -- we first came under permit in 2007. We've been under permit continuously since that time. And with every five-year permit cycle, our responsibilities and expectations grow. And this is -- this slide is a little bit permit geek speak, but I think it's really interesting that the permit is guided by a principle that assumes that by controlling what enters our city's stormwater system, we can protect the receiving waters, like the lake and the river and the creeks, from those stormwater pollution impacts. It's basically we take a pollution prevention focus when implementing these programs. Now, this slide lists out permit elements that make up our stormwater management program. There are more than 140 actions in the stormwater management program. We are not going to walk through all of those, I promise you. I think the key point to take from this slide is that this is a citywide permit. The column on the right shows key departments implementing the various elements, and you can see that almost every city department has a key role in implementing this permit. Now, Redmond's Stormwater Management Program has to incorporate all of these elements to stay in compliance. By fully implementing the permit program, we are signaling that we are taking all the actions needed to protect our stormwater system and to protect and restore our waters. The permit tells us what to do. That's what these categories show and what the permit requirements show, but it doesn't necessarily tell us how to do it. That's where our programs and our departments have some flexibility and can show some leadership. As Ernie mentioned, I think, the permit was reissued this summer. It just came out and became effective August 1st. And as has happened in every permit cycle, it expands on what was required in the previous permit cycle. This slide highlights a few of the new permit requirements that are coming online, and I think as you look at them, you may see that several of them help to reinforce the mission, vision, and values of the city. I wanted to highlight just a couple for your consideration. The overburdened community engagement. This helps ensure that we are reaching out to and equitably serving the entire Redmond community. Number five, calling for a stormwater retrofit facility planning effort. This is the first time that Department of Ecology has assigned retrofit targets to the city. So we are being asked to bring a certain number of acres up to current stormwater management standards. This item will really inform our CIP process for stormwater. And then number seven, I think, is interesting because it just shows how the permit is always focused on preventing the most harmful chemicals from reaching the environment. Next slide, please. I'm turning it back to Ernie.
Thank you, Ann. So now I'd like to take a little deeper dive on one of the key requirements of the permit, which is operations. The operational needs of the permit are rooted around inspection-driven maintenance activities for a variety of asset types. That means our staff has to inspect thousands of assets each year, and based on their findings in those inspections, they have to make repairs, remove sediment, and perform other maintenance activities within a prescribed timeframe based on the original inspection date. In the city's public stormwater system, those assets that we have to inspect include over 11,000 catch basins, those are your standard storm drains that you see all over the street, as well as 600-ish treatment and flow control facilities. Those are made up of things like detention vaults, bioswales, ponds, biofiltration facilities. Those are made up of things like detention vaults, bioswales, ponds, biofiltration facilities, those types of structures. So all of that work requires careful documentation and reporting. In order to keep track of all that data, we use a work management software called Lucidity. Within that system, we've configured inspection forms, work orders, and maps to help us plan the work and track the progress. So this image to the right on this slide is a quick screenshot from that system, and I just included that to highlight how some of this work is tracked and visualized. For instance, the little basins in the bottom that are highlighted in red, those are basins that have been inspected and need to be cleaned. The ones that are outlined in green, those were inspected, did need to be cleaned, but then have been cleaned. So it's a really useful tool for staff to track progress when you're dealing with such a huge number of assets. In many cases, technicians are viewing and adding information to the system in the field using mobile devices. So this has been developed over the past several years and has resulted not only in better record-keeping, but also significant efficiency improvements as well. All right. So we talked about the data management need, but now I wanted to talk about the level of effort that it takes, the level of effort it takes to complete this work. We have an operations crew of 10 maintenance technicians, and it takes roughly 80% of their time. So that's about 17,000 labor hours each year to perform the actions needed to meet permit On the left, I've included a few stats that highlight some of the results of that work. So in the past five-plus years, the staff have inspected over 33,000 catch basins, leading to almost 8,000 basin cleanings or repairs, over 3,000 facility inspections, resulting in almost 300 repairs or maintenance. And they've responded to 920 spills or incident responses related to pollution prevention. So all of that work resulted in over 6,000 tons of material removed from the system, which is a huge undertaking. Over here on the right, the image to the right is staff maintaining our Redmond Way Regional Water Quality Filter Facility. You actually can see Director Burt in the background there.
I did a lot that day.
Yeah. But yeah, this is a big project we take on every couple of years to filter that regional downtown water. So we touched on kind of that 80% of stormwater operations work is related to permit compliance. So that kind of begs the question, what's that other 20%? Some of the activities in that 20% are related to maintaining and inspecting our conveyance system, so our stormwater pipes. We do CCTV and pipe repairs and that type of thing. We also respond to any kind of localized flooding instances that happen during rain events and other customer service requests as they come in. And yes, there are sometimes baby ducks we have to rescue from catch basins. So that's usually a highlight of the day when you're able to do that. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Ann to talk about some of the stormwater programs related to permit compliance.
Yeah, these aren't quite as exciting as baby ducks, but they're important nonetheless. So we wanted to highlight a few programs that, while not driven by permit compliance, definitely help support and reinforce that work, and we think are important in support of the utility more broadly. So the first two items, the Redmond Paired Watershed and Street Sweeping Studies, are both in 2024. We began to work on the Stormwater and Surface Water System Plan. This is a functional plan that will help us identify capital and programmatic strategies to manage our stormwater and surface water assets. And this plan will help us jumpstart actions to support the new stormwater retrofit planning requirement in the permit. We undertake watershed planning by taking a holistic look at how to restore watershed function across the city and watersheds across the city. And this effort directly ties into a requirement we have under the long-range planning permit element and actually informed the Department of Ecology's development of that specific permit element. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that we have a Pollution Prevention Assistance, or PPA, program. And this technical assistance program helps Redmond businesses prevent pollution from reaching our waterways. So it is, while not specifically a stormwater program, it definitely has a stormwater pollution prevention benefit. And then finally, we wanted to just highlight, yeah.
Before you move on to that, will you talk about?
Oh.
Sorry. Will you talk a little bit about Scott and the Spill Response Program as well?
Sure.
Sure. And you can chime in here, but yeah. So Erin referenced Scott, Scott McCory. He is our IDDE Program Coordinator, Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination. There's so many acronyms that I try to keep track of. But Scott is really the point person on responding to documenting and helping contain and following upon any kind of spill instances, illicit discharges. So that could be a car wreck, that could be somebody trying to dispose of materials down the storm drain, it could be just an accidental type of thing that requires outreach and education. So Scott works closely with our operations team to respond to those things and document them, make sure that the necessary containment and follow-up and cleanup activities are taking place, and then all of the reporting that's required up to the state. So, Ann, I don't know if you wanted to cover on that.
I would just add that on an average year, Redmond has between 150 and 200 of these incidents to respond to. Some of them are very minor, but some of them require extensive follow-up and sometimes coordination with our neighboring cities.
Yeah. One of the great things about Scott is he's essentially our first responder to these events. And we also engage in an aspect of education, not only for the community, but for other city employees, the police, fire department, parks department, when they're out and about. We do internal training for them to understand what an illicit discharge looks like. It's just not somebody pouring a bucket of paint, you know, down a drain. It's also identifying the types of runoff that could, you know, basically you walk the cat back and you find, hey, this construction site doesn't have adequate controls in place, and we're getting discharged into the stream system. And so a lot of those reports come in based on this education campaign that we do internally and with the public as well. And we have a spill response number, which is what? I should know it off the top of my head. Yes, yes. So anybody can call that number and report that, and we'll get somebody out there right away to deal with these things. So it's a real critical component of our response plan.
Absolutely, because it's the pollution prevention focus, again, coming into play. Okay, so I'll wrap with a quick look ahead at a few things that are coming down the pike for us and for you, we hope. We are looking forward to receiving major reports for both the Redmond Paired Watershed Study and the Street Sweeping Study in 2025, and we would be happy to come back and share those findings with council if you would like that. Our High School Creek Watershed Restoration Planning Effort is launching later this winter, beginning with a CIP retrofit plan. You'll be hearing more about that in the coming months, I think. As well, we are ramping up Phase II of our Close the Lid Dumpster Campaign. This is a behavior change campaign which works with local businesses to tackle an important stormwater pollution source. Our Stormwater and Surface Water System Plan is underway. We expect to have a draft available in the third quarter of 2025 and a final available in 2026, and we will be ready to provide council staff reports along the way. And with that, we'll wrap up and answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you so much for this report, as well as just for the really important work that you're doing to protect the health of our waterways and our environment. Counsel, I'll go to you. Any questions? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. I loved geeking out to this, so thank you. Deeply appreciate taking a look at what is the root cause, and rather than treating symptoms, that we are looking at where is the root cause coming from. So I deeply appreciate that and looking for prevention on that. And also understanding that water, we know, is a regional issue, if not getting to be a state issue, and how can we work together? So I loved hearing about Scott, so please thank him on behalf of myself and my colleagues for being that first responder for spills and incidents. I know that we had a quantifier of 920 spills or incidents that were responded to. And while that gives us an idea of roughly 150 to 200, as Ann had mentioned, have we tracked, do we have a number for what was the total impact that was either potential, and I know that's a loose number, but then in that 920 responses, what was the impact that we were able to divert? Try to see how I could ask that better, because I know that that's kind of a nebulous question.
Well, let me try and back into an answer, if I may. And then, Ernie or Director Burt, please add. One of the requirements in the permit that we didn't mention is whenever our stormwater system leads to or contributes to a violation of state water quality standards in the receiving water, meaning the creeks, the lake, we need to do a special notification to the Department of Ecology, and that's a letter signed by the Director describing what happened, how we responded, and how we will prevent this from happening in the future. We work very hard to not submit those, not have to submit those letters to the Department of Ecology, but I can report that in an average year, we have fewer than 10. So of those 920 incidents, there were, I don't have the exact number, and I'd be happy to provide that, but there were probably around 25 that actually caused or might have caused a violation of state water quality standards. It could have been a violation of the turbidity standard, so there was too much sediment that made it into the water. It could have been that soap was seen in the water, or something that could have been We've done very well in preventing problems in the receiving waters, and that's really the target of the Clean Water Act, is to protect the creeks, protect the lake, protect the aquifer.
And I'll just add that I think that highlights some of the success of the early detection and quick response through Scott's program and our operations groups to stop the sources of pollution as soon as they are reported and detected, and then take the necessary containment and cleanup procedures before the pollutants are discharged into lakes and streams.
Yeah.
But they try to get an estimation of, you know, how much runoff has potentially gone in to the catch basin or downstream. But it's somewhat of an exact science. But the point is that Ann is talking about, when I have to put my name on this "please forgive us" letter to Ecology, you know, that's when we have a major event where we're able to usually measure a higher level of a discharge that we weren't able to contain, because then you're seeing the downward effects. For example, when we were building the community center here, there was a discharge. I don't think it was caught the day that it happened, it was the next day, and you could see the outfall of the discharge into the Sammamish River, right? And so that triggered somebody, hey, this isn't right. And we did the investigation, walked the cat back, saw that it was coming from this site. So we stopped it. But it's when it gets to that point, the larger discharges, that's when we have to write these letters, and we know that there's been a larger impact.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Council Vice President Forsey?
Thank you. So does that baby duck number include the fire rescues? Just kidding. Hi.
We don't track that number quite as closely, the number of baby ducks, but I would say we've got at least 20 just on the stormwater operations side.
Nice. Good job on the baby ducks. So love this whole presentation. Also, it was geeking out over this, especially Slide number five with the spill materials collecting. It took me back to my science fair project in elementary school, so that was pretty fun. One area that we've heard a lot about on this council recently is the Gun Club Creek. And I just want to kind of put a plug out there for us looking at that area. I know it's not on any current plans, but we've heard from community members that it maybe hasn't been tested in a while. I know Director Burt is not going to be surprised that I'm bringing this up, but just definitely want to make sure we're paying attention to that area and the potential lead that comes from that area, so that we're going to catch that before it becomes a problem, if it were to become a problem.
Thank you for that. And I would just note that one of the permit elements is outreach and education, and so there may be some additional education we can provide to that community.
Thank you. Other questions? Not seeing any. And there's no requested action here, right? Is that correct? Okay, great. Well, I'll ask one quick question, which is to, I'll mention that at the RIAA Salmon Recovery Council meeting, the last one that we had, we actually had a presentation from King County on the effects of the new NPDES requirements, kind of from the county perspective, and how that relates to, you know, thinking about salmon recovery. And one of the things that they suggested was, you know, just in terms of how do we improve across our whole region, is doing more collaborations between jurisdictions, and especially seeking together for funding or, you know, partnering on maintenance work that goes above and beyond permit requirements. So just curious to hear, is there anything that we kind of have in the works on any of that, collaborating with any neighboring jurisdictions?
I'll kick off, and then please, oh.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. We have been collaborating already with King County in some of the watershed restoration work we were doing in Monticello Creek, which was our first target watershed for that long-range planning effort. So we jointly looked at that watershed, we implemented similar capital projects, and we're sharing information about this emerging technology called CMAC, for instance, in Monticello Creek. So that's one instance of where we have collaborated. We are also in conversations with them about potential shared facilities, regional, like doing, again, a regional planning effort to deal with some stormwater management issues in the Marymore area. Those are just conversations we're having. But through sort of the coordinator-level work, I work with King County really closely, and we work with King County closely, and we share resources, we share educational resources, we share tools for tracking permit compliance and annual reporting technology to support that. And I think a lot of the science we're doing is with King County. We're using a Water Works grant to do some of the street sweeping analyses that we have going on in the Tosh Creek watershed, and I think that will just continue. We always look for opportunities. I guess the one last thing I would mention is there is a permit requirement to determine if any of the firefighting foam we use or our partner agencies use contains PFAS. And King County has initiated an effort to survey all of the neighboring firefighting agencies to confirm that they do not use PFAS. We were doing the same thing, and so we're sharing that information so that all of our neighbors will know who does or doesn't have PFAS in their firefighting, you know, materials inventory.
Thank you. Go ahead, Director Burt. Did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, the foam that the Redmond Fire Department uses does not have PFAS.
Good to know.
That's a positive for us there.
I was just going to highlight one more example of some regional collaboration, tying it back to the operations side and bringing it back to Scott and our IDDE program. Scott actually coordinates pretty closely with IDDE staff from neighboring agencies. It is a regional issue. They strategize together. They recently met with an association of tow companies, tow truck companies. You know, tow companies are often the first on a scene of a vehicle accident where you're releasing fluids and things like that. And there's, you know, our IDDE coordinator, along with regional partners. And there's, you know, our IDDE coordinator, along with regional partners, is describing some of the activities that they can take to help mitigate that, you know, keep those materials out of basins before we can even get there. I just thought that was worth highlighting. It was a good way of kind of collaborating and reaching out to, to other agencies that you might not generally think of when it comes to stormwater.
That's very exciting. Thank you. And I'll also note in that presentation, they were talking about some studies around six PPDQ and just trying to think about, yeah, a couple different evaluations they've been doing that will hopefully inform some of our work on that. So happy to pass along. I assume you already are watching it, all these studies, but in case it's helpful, I can pass along those materials. Well, thank you so much. Seeing no other questions. I think we will look forward to hearing updated work on this going forward, and thank you so much again for all your work. All right. Moving on to the last item on our agenda, we're at council talk time. There was one Hopper item submitted, as I mentioned to the council in email this week. We did keep it to just a memo and not attached materials to be just extra careful to not be discussing the substance of this item, but whether the real discussion tonight would be whether we put this item on the agenda. I'll turn it over to Council Vice President Forsyth to share her proposal.
I am proposing that we take a stance on Initiative 2066. We heard a lot about this during our council conversations in the park. I won't say which way we would be deciding, but we heard a lot of community members concerned about this, and I think it would be valuable for us as a city to take a stance.
Great. So the proposal would be, and I think it already says in our memo that it would be to take an opposing view, so if the listening public, the goal would be for us to, we would have a public comment period, or public comment opportunity for those, for anyone to be able to come and share their thoughts, and then we would vote on a resolution that would declare it's the city's official position to I-2066. So I guess I'll just get a sense from council members, maybe using thumbs, or if you want to comment on whether you are good with us putting this on the agenda for the October 15th meeting, which is what it's proposed for. Councilmember Stewart?
Are questions permitted before we take a upper down?
Yes.
I would love to hear, thanks for bringing this forward. I would love to hear the conversation that the sponsors had as we heard from the public and discussed the last time the council held a hearing on a ballot initiative. It's a tool that we have and one to take gracefully. We will already have ballots in mailboxes and in homes by the 15th of October, and so I'm curious how the three of you kind of discussed or reconciled or factored that in. It's just one of the considerations that I've been thinking about.
I will say, I think ballots drop on October 18th, so if we were to take action on October 15th, it would be three days before ballots officially come out, although some people may get them before that time, certainly if they register for something early. Council Vice President Forsyth, would you like to speak to that?
I think that pretty much covers it. Ballots for the majority of the public drop on the 18th, and we know that a lot of our community votes late, so this gets it on, in people's minds prior to ballots for the general public dropping. And this was a direct ask from community, so I thought it was important to act quickly. I think we turned this around in 24 hours to get this on the deadline for the Wednesday agenda. So just hoping that we can open it up, have the conversation, have the public hearing, and then take a vote.
Councilmember Anderson, I thought I saw your hand up. Did you have a question?
I did. I just was curious if we're going to be able to have a hearing similar to how we had one last time. I think that's the request, and just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I think the, we wouldn't call it a hearing because of just the notice requirements around a hearing, but we would have the item on the agenda, and we would have a dedicated time for comment on that and would provide as much time as necessary for everyone to have, be able to make comment on that in accordance with law, which is to make sure that there's approximately equal opportunity for opposing views to be shared.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Stewart?
Sorry, yeah, thank you for the response on that. My understanding was that ballots were going to be mailed on Friday, so I was just, I guess, misinformed on that, so thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, then I'll go back and ask, are council members good with putting this item on the agenda for the next business meeting? Great. I see a majority of thumbs there, so we will put this on the agenda for the next business meeting. And again, that was just whether you wanted to see it on the business meeting, and we can all discuss and share our points of view on this, this particular initiative. Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. While I'm for this, I also wanted to make sure that I made a comment on it before it just goes through our process. I think that Councilmember Stewart brought up a very good point in that we need to be careful when we, when we take a stance so that it does not become the norm. However, I also know from hearing from our communities that this is important and giving them an opportunity to come and make public comment so where, you know, they can voice that. And that, it was that latter piece that had me be a thumbs up for this to move forward, and I want to strongly caution that we do not make this a norm. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just comment for myself in terms of, you know, putting this on the agenda, just to agree on that point, is that I think when Council Vice President Forsyth reached out to me to co-sponsor on this Hopper item, I was particularly supportive after our community conversations and multiple people coming up, as well as getting quite a few emails about it, and, because the only way that we can discuss something like this is by putting a resolution on the agenda or having a hearing about it. So I think giving that, that community the opportunity to come share their thoughts is key. Did you have a comment, Councilmember Solah Houdin? Okay. Councilmember Stewart?
So I have a follow-up question on process then. So last time we held a hearing, I actually assumed that's what we were doing again. So if we are not holding a hearing, we are just having it on the agenda and asking for regular comment during items from the audience, is that correct?
No, there'll be a dedicated comment period. It's just not, we're not going to use the word hearing state law, and we have our clerk here, maybe she can come and explain it, but as far as I understand, state law does not require us to have what is called a hearing. We just need to have a dedicated time in which people can express opposing views. And so the, there will be a dedicated time, that would be the item, and we would open up the public comment on that item, and then we would vote on it after that. So that would be separate from the public comment that we'll have at the beginning of the meeting that is a general public comment.
So, and that is all to, because there's not enough time to notice a hearing, is that correct?
I believe so. I think there are certain requirements on hearings in terms of notice.
I would just ask that we are taking any, any steps we might normally take when we actually are really engaged, like asking for public feedback. And so if this could be, notice is the wrong verb because that has a very particular meaning in this context, but if we are making sure that folks are aware about the opportunity to come and share their thoughts, I think that that would still be really important in terms of the intention of our conversation.
Great. And I agree with that, and I will ensure that I, that I speak with the city staff about how we can get the message out with our communications team so that people are aware that we will be taking this item up next week and even if they haven't signed up for our usual council agendas, but to actually make it kind of proactive. Council Vice President Forsyth?
And I have alerted some folks that were asking about this, that we would be having this conversation tonight, and it may potentially be on the 15th. So some folks do already know and will hopefully show up if they feel like commenting.
Thank you all very much. And I know this is something that we don't do that often, so thank you for the grace as we figure out the process for this. So the other item that I wanted to bring up for council talk time was, was that we do have, I believe on October 17th, the deadline coming up to apply for the Sound Cities Associations. Oh, and I see, we have a hand raised. I'll just finish saying this, and then I will call in case that was from the last item. But we have the opportunity for applying to some of the regional boards that SCA appoints people to. As I wrote an email to the council the other day, if, if multiple council members from the same city apply for the same board, then nobody will be chosen. So we just need to let each other know what we're going to be applying for, what we're interested in. We still have a little bit of time, but I, but I just thought that we could use some time to be able to share what we're interested in. I will stop for just a moment. Councilmember Anderson, I saw your hand up. Was that in regards to the last item?
Nope. I just wanted to add something for talk time, as I noted earlier, and then also I will comment on this item. I am not pursuing any SCA committees next year, so thank you.
Great. And I will come back to you after this item. So, so yeah, I guess I will go around and just ask council members, you can raise your hand and share if there are any committees that you plan to be applying for, so that way we can all coordinate a little better. Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
I am not looking forward to join any committees in the next year.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks. I reapply to the Growth Management Planning Board, where I currently chair the SCA Caucus and the Growth Management Planning Council at King County. Thanks.
Councilmember Solah Houdin?
I'm having a conversation with Mayor Bernie next week during our check-in just to talk through some, some questions that I had for her, and I will update council as Councilmember Stewart did if I make any decisions.
Sounds good. Great. I have previously been serving on the King Conservation District Advisory Committee. I'm deciding whether I'll apply for that again, so if anyone ends up with a burning desire to do it, talk to me about it. And I am also considering running for the North Caucus seat on the SCA board, so just wanted to let folks know that. I think there's going to be two seats open there, and Redmond previously had a seat back when Mayor Bernie was, was sitting in that, in the board, and then now we don't have representation there. So I think that it could be a good opportunity to make sure that Redmond is kind of at the table, advancing some of the SCA priorities. So, so anyway, that's, that's something that I'm considering doing as well. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I am good with the committees that I have and am not looking to join any of the other SCA committees at the moment.
Great. All right. Well, seeing no other hands raised on that, I think we went through everyone, we'll move to Councilmember Anderson. You wanted to raise an issue.
Sure. This was regarding the tenant protections, and I'm curious if the sponsors of that item are open to adding either a cross-reference if we have local legislation already for this, but I'd like to see the tenant protections address the problem of hidden cameras in rental units, especially Airbnb-type or VRBO units. I've had some conversations with folks that this is a concern, and this would include other things like home surveillance privacy standards on any private property, as it is one area of responsibility that we have as legislators to help our, protect our community. And if it's something that's separate, I can propose it separately, but I think it belongs in tenant protections.
Thank you for raising that. We can certainly raise it in the list of things that we talk about with the staff as we look into kind of the different ideas that were raised. Council Vice President Forsyth, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think it's something we can definitely raise. I have a couple other ideas of things that I am interested in raising as well, so we can just make note and add it to the, to list to see where that might fall. And I'm sure there's some code out there that addresses especially inside VRBOs and such, so yeah, give us a chance to look into that.
Yeah, and I have noted that as well for follow-up. Thank you so much for raising that.
Yep. If you need some help, I'd be happy to help with that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there any other items for talk time? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. I have two items, but just to follow up on that, actually, I think it would be important to clarify, just so we all have the same expectations. I believe the outcome of the last conversation on this topic was that council leadership, who originally sponsored, is the word, sponsored the item, as well as Councilmember Fields, will be working with staff on that topic. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Great. My two for council talk time, actually, I'm just hoping that at some point that we as a council can debrief on our council conversations event. This is the first talk time we've had since then. I've just continued to have awesome conversations that were started that night and have gotten absolutely and asked and gotten a fair amount of feedback back about it. So I hope we can do that at some point. And then I wanted to check in on the scheduling of our meeting with the school boards, if we have any update there.
No update yet, but working on it. No other comments on that, but continuing to try to get that scheduled.
I just asked if there was an update, and it sounds like there's not. That's fine. That's cool. I'll just check in on it again. Thanks.
Councilmember Solah Houdin?
I will say, I do appreciate Councilmember Stewart for raising that because multiple community members have asked, does the city council meet with the school board? And, you know, it would be great to get that scheduled soon, but thank you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and I would like to see it scheduled soon. I think the holdup is more on the district's side, so, but I would say one of the things that I've been, that I am planning to do in the upcoming time is to try to sit down with the presidents of each of those bodies to just see if there's anything we can do between electeds to move the process of getting something on the schedule along. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I would be happy to join you for that.
And Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Is the, the waiting on the school boards, because we're working with two, is it both or are we waiting on one? Kind of where, where do we sit with that?
I think both are two separate processes, so they're, it's with each entity, and both have not given us a clear date yet, or had, had some, there was one potential date that we had with Bellevue, and then it got pushed off. So, yeah, just trying to.
And, I mean, quite directly, that was my, that was my question, like have, we're dealing with two, they're separate, who have we heard from, who have we not heard from?
Yeah, I think, I think our staff have, and Mayor have heard back from both school districts, but partially, you know, I think over the summer, they were busy, partially because school wasn't in session. Now they're busy because school is in session, so just figuring out when they actually would be able to meet with us is an interesting thing to figure out.
On that note, because I think that speaks to priorities, that's all I'll say about that for this moment. Going back to Councilmember Stewart's bringing up, and of course, unfortunately, I was unable to attend council, council conversations, and I believe I heard, and I don't know if this is correct, that I was hearing, when are we going to have a debrief on that?
Yeah, I was just, I thought it'd be nice as a body if, it was our first time doing it, so I'm always one for being a learning organization, so I don't know if there's one already scheduled, so it was just kind of a question, or would we might do that?
Thank you for reframing that. I thought it was more a comment, so I hadn't responded to it, so I appreciate that. I mean, we can debrief right now. I guess I can ask council members, do you have any feedback on how that went, ways it can be better? As a reminder, we were just talking about this today, about setting our next one. I think the date that we're coalescing around is January 23rd to have our Redmond Senior and Community Center Town Hall Council Conversation, but we were just saying that the series is still going to be called Council Conversations, so that one will be Council Conversations, colon, Town Hall at Redmond Senior and Community Center, so that it's clear this is a little bit of a different format. But yeah, but I think would be open to hearing people's feedback and anything that you think could improve a similar type of event. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thanks. Yeah, I thought it was really well attended, so I know you walked a lot of flyers around, so thank you for that. And I know the staff did a lot of hard work on getting the advertising out there for it. It was really interesting for me from the perspective of just information gathering and listening. I found that more valuable than, than a lot of back and forth and just, just hearing what's on people's minds, hearing the concerns. I was bummed I didn't get to visit every single table, so I think that next time, I don't know if we need to have a shorter amount of time at the tables, or maybe, I don't, I don't know if we need a longer. maybe, I don't know if we need a longer event, because it felt like a good amount of time, or maybe fewer tables. I don't know. But I definitely was bummed that I didn't get to go to the transportation table, of all things, so.
Councilmember Salahuddin?
Yeah, I think Council Vice President Forsyth mentioned, very well-attended. It was great to see so many people from different parts of Redmond there, and having the opportunity to talk with them. Something that I did suggest to Deidra that I think we're going to move forward with is, I thought the most important part of this event is the follow-up, and so we took everyone's emails, and actually reaching out to them to make sure that they're hearing from us, not just, hey, come visit us at council, but we are receptive to, at the event, but we're receptive to hearing from any of you at any time. So here's an email address, council@redmond, for you to reach out to, so that we know exactly what your issues are, because there were so many things that were discussed, and I was taking note of them on my phone, but, you know, all of that information, want to make sure that it gets to the right place, and if people do have any follow-ups, that we can route those. One thing, yeah, I didn't get to visit every table, so I think that's one thing that would love to, just engage in a few other conversations, but really well-planned. I think Deidra and Derek and the rest of the team did a really good job.
That's great. I will agree. I thought also, one thing that I'll say was really exciting about it, I talked to some people who come, you know, to a lot of our meetings, or I see them at a lot of events, and then there were some people who have never come to a council meeting, or a couple people who just moved to Redmond and just wanted to know what's going on, and it was just, it was pretty amazing. Some people, there were a couple parents who just wanted to figure out how they can get their kid more involved and volunteering, you know, and it was just, I think, really cool to see the diversity of different community members that came out, and the different issues and perspectives that they have, so really helps to inform our work. Councilmember Salahuddin?
Sorry, I will say, and this is something that community members did note, is that the event did overlap the Seahawks Monday Night Football game, and that is something that would be great to look out for next time.
Fair enough, yeah. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, and the last Monday in September was a beautiful sunny day, so everyone in the park got to enjoy that wonderful sunset. No, on a more serious note, I got a lot of feedback, like I said, and I think folks who participated really enjoyed it. I have been reminding folks that we're going to do a town hall, and a few folks have said, but why? This was better. And I think that expresses the accessibility. So I say we continue to move forward, and we do our town hall, and we learn about all the different formats, and we try things out, and move around town. And as Council President Kritzler said, you know, meet, meet the folks who wouldn't otherwise come out. I think that's super important. I got some feedback about the audio quality of the parts that we tried to do outdoors, on the microphone and things like that, but I think at our brand-new Senior and Community Center, that'll be a much more controlled environment, and that should be totally fine. But yeah, just again, real, I thought it was great, so thanks, everyone, for the work on it, yeah.
Well, and thanks for calling for the debrief on it. I think it was definitely warranted, and as Councilmember Stewart just mentioned, I think as we've been trying to plan this for a while, we've been kind of saying, well, which way would we do it? How, what would the format look like? And I think just testing out over the next year, different types of formats, and seeing what's working, what's resonating with people will be good, and also what resonates with council members, what feels like gives us the best ability to share with folks about, you know, our perspectives on the work that we're doing. So, yeah, encourage folks to keep giving your feedback as we do more of these. And then also we'll note that I, this week, am going to send the follow-up email to all participants. Meant to do that last week, but I will do it this week, and Deidra has actually helped me to prep a little email to send out to everyone, so that way they all have the info, and I'll copy council on that. Great. Any other items for council talk time? And I also saw Councilmember Anderson did the clapping emoji during that discussion, so hopefully also excited. All right.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Thank you so much. So if there are no other items, for good of the order, that concludes our last item on our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.